Norfolk City Council to order. This is an open meeting and posted in the northwest corner of this room is the actual Open Meeting Act. We would ask, it's nice to see so many of you here tonight. Maybe it's the new council chambers that's attracting, but whatever it is, it's nice to see a group of you here tonight. We're going to ask that you would stand with us as we have a moment of silence and then the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll continue with roll call. Troy.
Here.
Langy.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Muren.
Here.
Moaning.
Here.
House.
Here.
File.
Here.
All right. Under action, I would request a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Motion with a second to approve, if you will please vote. All council members voting in the affirmative. And as well, approval of the full agenda.
So moved, Your Honor. Second.
A motion with a second to approve the full agenda before us again, please vote. All council members voting in the affirmative. Okay. We'll move on then to special presentations. I'm going to read the two proclamations first and then we'll let the lights go down and you'll be ready to do your PowerPoint for us. So the first is a proclamation for National Wear Red Day. Whereas the American Heart Association's Go Red for Women movement has been impacting the health of women for over 10 years and for more than 627,000 women's lives have been saved and 330 fewer women are dying every day. And whereas heart disease is the number one killer of women, yet only one in five American women believe that heart disease is her greatest health threat. And whereas cardiovascular diseases cause one in three women's death each year, killing approximately one woman every minute. And whereas an estimated 43 million women in the U.S. are affected by cardiovascular diseases. And whereas 90% of women have more, one or more risk factors for developing heart disease. And whereas women comprise only 24% of participants in all heart-related studies. And whereas since 1984, more women than men have died each year from heart disease and the gap between men and women's survival continues to widen. And whereas women are less likely to call 911 for themselves when experiencing symptoms of a heart attack than they are if someone else were having a heart attack. And whereas in celebration of the 10th National Wear Red Day on February 1st, 2013, Go Red for Women is asking all women across America to join us in making America Go Red and to save women's lives. Now therefore be it resolved that I sue Fuickman, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska by the power vested in me and in recognition of the importance of ongoing fight against heart disease and stroke, do hereby proclaim Friday, February 1st, 2013, as National Wear Red Day in the City of Norfolk and urge all citizens to show their support for women in the fight against heart disease by commemorating this day by wearing red, by wearing the color of red. By increasing awareness, speaking up about heart disease and empowering women to reduce their risk for cardiovascular disease, we can save thousands of lives each year. And the next is the same, is the proclamation for American Heart Month. Whereas while progress has been significant in reducing deaths from heart disease, it is still the number one killer of both women and men. And whereas cardiovascular diseases are the nation's leading cause of death, the costliest disease with direct and indirect costs estimated to be $312.6 billion. And whereas between 1999 and 2009, the rate of death from cardiovascular disease fell 32.7%, but still accounted for nearly one in three deaths in the nation. And whereas about 2,150 people die from cardiovascular diseases each day, accounting for about one death every 40 seconds. And whereas the American Heart Association's 2020 Impact Goal seeks to improve cardiovascular health of all Americans by 20% while reducing deaths from cardiovascular disease and stroke by 20% through research, population, and community-level intervention, public health and policy measures. And whereas efforts of the American Heart Association encourage citizens to help save lives by calling 911 if symptoms occur, to become trained in CPR and to encourage comprehensive automated external defibrillation programs in their communities. And whereas the American Heart Association is celebrating February 2013 as American Heart Month and promoting education and awareness by encouraging citizens to learn the warning signs of heart attack and stroke. Now therefore be it resolved that I sue Fuickman, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska by power vested in me and in the recognition of the importance of ongoing fight against heart disease, do hereby proclaim February 2013 as American Heart Month in the City of Norfolk and urge all citizens to recognize the critical importance of tools and skills that will increase survival rates from cardiac arrest. By incorporating these tools into aggressive programs, we can save thousands of lives each year. So I don't know that we have anyone here tonight to accept these. I do know that we will have probably Councilman House that was going to be doing the red run with the women on February, February 1st, is it on that party? So appreciate the fact that he will be representing us there as well and he's looking forward to that one mile run. Right Dave?
Yeah, good.
So with that, we will go forward with a presentation. The Norfolk Art Center and the Junior High School Challenge Class. Their proposal for Central Park.
Up is on.
I didn't push it. It is on?
Up is on.
Your red button?
It should have been on.
Don't touch it.
Let me hear.
Can you, is that good?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. They all speak louder. Okay. I have to state my name, right?
Yes.
Melinda Cozel. I'm the program coordinator for the Norfolk Art Center. My address is 1011 North 7th Street in Norfolk.
You should be okay without having been over there too far.
Yeah.
Okay. No, you're all right. Be comfortable.
Okay. In 1917, Pazwalk Grove, the block of green space on Pazwalk Avenue between 5th and 6th Streets, was purchased by the City of Norfolk and named Central Park. This park was important because of its convenient location, historical interest, and a desire to develop recreational ground for concerts and a relaxing place for farmers coming into the city for the day. Central Park was that place for a long time, but has since been kind of left behind as new parks and playgrounds are opening up. We have seen the desire of the community to restore the park and we believe that we have an obligation to that community to pay attention and be an example of what engaging a community is all about. At the Norfolk Art Center, we believe that art is the communication of what a society experiences, feels, and values. And so we find that art is no less evident in a park renovation project than on paintings on the wall. We've been working with the Norfolk Junior High School and some of its classrooms to have students involved with the process. Some classes have input on specific projects and some are working on managing the project alongside me. These students are learning what's involved in creating and carrying out these types of projects and through it being shown that their opinion and presence is valued. We're also pulling many members of the community together for each of these projects. We look to the people of Norfolk not for their money, but for their talents and desire to do something for their community. And we hope that this project becomes a shining example of what people can really accomplish in this town. Our goal is to have three of the four following projects completed in May of 2013 and the fourth to be in the fall of this year. So the first project that we're proposing for the Central Park renovation is restoration of the stage. When Pazwalk Grove became Central Park in 1917, the Fireman's Band proposed that the platform be built to have concerts and it remains today. The bricks around, I don't have a pointer that you see, is now gone, but the potential is still there. We've seen a resurgence in outdoor concerts and productions and see this as a great opportunity for the community to participate. What we propose is adding a cover structure. This is a very basic concept of what we're thinking to do. And that'll allow not only protection from weather, but allows for hanging lights or scenery and will also have a movie screen attached for outdoor movies in the summer. The team behind this concept is comprised of contractors, engineers, metalworkers, as well as musicians and theater directors. So this is a whole collaboration. Renovating the stage will create a lot more opportunities to gather in the park for festivals and other performances. The second project that we propose is a butterfly garden. Butterfly gardens use plants that attract butterflies and pollinating insects. And not only can these gardens be beautiful, but they can help sustain dwindling butterfly populations as well. This is our proposed site for approximately 10 by 16-foot garden. It offers open space that's out of the way of foot traffic. And this is a rough concept of the layout and the shape. We're looking at creating four quarters with paths to divide it. That allows people to walk through and it's an easy way to plan the space. The plants will include a variety of brightly colored bushes and herbs that attract pollinators and allow for caterpillars to feed. We'll be planting in a way that highlights the bloom cycle. So at any point during, between spring and fall, there will be flowers and bloomed based on that. We're considering native plants and always thinking about choices that don't require extra maintenance so that it'll be easily sustainable. The junior high science classrooms, under the direction of Julie Wish and with the assistance of Jamie Bachman and the Nebraska Game and Parks Commission, will be doing an initial soil test and tend to the garden in the fall and spring. This is going to be used for an outdoor classroom that they'll be able to access throughout the year. Members of the Northeast Nebraska Master Gardeners have volunteered to look after the park continuously for the year, especially during the summer when school's not in session as well. So this garden will serve as an outdoor classroom, not only for the junior high, but Christ Lutheran School that's nearby and any school that wishes to use it. And it's also a place for the community to enjoy too. The third project is making this structure a little bit more friendly looking. And we're proposing to do that with a mural that will go all the way around the outside. We've selected this artist, Gerard Pafung, who's a street artist from Omaha. He has a really strong reputation of not only creating art that reflects communities, but also he's a great advocate for developing and strengthening communities through the use of art. He'll also be working with the junior high art classes during the week as an artist in residence. Now I know the idea of street art is probably making some people a little nervous, but by opening up our town to some new ideas, we're sending a message that we value not only the history of this town, but also the present and the future. And that's a really strong message to send to this community, especially the children who live here. Gerard is also interested in collaborating with local artists over the coming months after this project to create a series of murals throughout the town that reflect Norfolk's history and they connect in a single message. So this will be a huge opportunity to bring attention and tourism to the town as well. The last project is the one that's planned for this fall and it's a little library nook. These little library book exchanges are found all over the world and they let people just take and leave books and it's always free, of course. We are working with the Norfolk Public Library and the junior high school creative writing classes to establish care of the book exchange so that it's looked after throughout the year. And the Northeast Community College Industrial Tech Department is using this as a project in their fall curriculum and they'll be carrying out the design and the construction. As you can see, this is the proposed spot we have for this little nook, kind of near the playground. And these are just some examples of ones in seeding areas that have been done in the past. So, yeah. We feel that all of these projects will give a needed lift to the park and reclaim its status as a central gathering place in Norfolk. And through that, we believe the quote, this quote from the Norfolk Daily News on November 23rd, 1916, can be true again. It said, "The Grove has always been regarded as the ideal place for clean and wholesome public gatherings and it will be appreciated more and more with the passing years. Its distinct advantage is that it may immediately be transformed into a splendid park, thus permitting the present generation to enjoy its benefits and pleasures as well as those which are to follow." Are there any questions?
Do you want to hit upon a little bit of maybe the discussion, some of the discussions and some of the questions when Shane and I visited with you and some of the concerns that were expressed and?
Sure. Sure. I know one of the concerns is vandalism and that's been a problem in the past. Well, one of the things that we feel, we feel that this will help in that is that on one hand, you know, showing that we value the park will cause others to as well. Ideally, you know, that may not be 100% true all the time, but an attitude of caring about something kind of portrays that attitude to other people as well. The other half of that is by engaging the junior high students and giving them ownership of the project means that for those students that age who are those students causing problems, there'll be a little bit more of a positive peer pressure to take care of it. You know, if they've done the work, they're going to be less likely to want to see anything happen to it. And by assigning people, whether it's students, volunteers in the community to look after these different areas, it'll help curb that problem by continually doing active cleanup.
What's been the response from the students? Are they excited about it?
They're really excited. We've been talking to them about the process of making a proposal about writing grants, about asking people for help. And they've, they've really felt great, not like, they felt great just having someone ask their ideas. They've also gotten really excited about projects they could do in the future. And now that they have, they're developing the skills to be able to do it, they can have the initiative to take on those things on their own. And they've just been really excited to be a part of it. They're glad somebody asked them to be.
And who supervises the students?
Well, one of our classes is the challenge class, which is taught by Beth Gentrup. They're sort of my project management team. There are a few other classrooms, the science classrooms, the creative writing classes, which is taught by Shelley Schnorr. And then the art classrooms by Jackie Rusika. And then of course, Principal Michael Hart has been great in letting us come in and talk to teachers and students and making this happen.
Thank you.
So I guess one question that I have, this is just a great, a great idea, a great concept. I like, I like the collaboration between all the different people, but your vision right now is the initial building would be these students and this group. How do we guarantee a perpetual, or do you see the students from future classes maintaining it or, I guess what's your vision?
I think with a lot of maintenance, it will be future classrooms. Like I said, the science classrooms every year will tend to that garden. So that will continue on. There are some ideas for other projects we could do in that park that we couldn't do all at once this year, but there are future ideas. And then there are a lot of other parks in town and there's a lot of other projects. What our goal is, is to start engaging the junior high school students, especially to want to be a part and to do something in their community. So it doesn't necessarily have to be Central Park in the future, it could be a lot of other things. But the idea is to always keep them engaged.
Thank you. Melinda, I just want to say thanks to you and the Norfolk Art Center for bringing this creative, community-minded project forward. I think it's a great idea. It engages our youth. It re-energizes a historic park in the community and it promotes learning and culture in Norfolk. And you're really to be commended for bringing this forward and I'm hopeful that the city can be helpful where appropriate. So thanks a lot.
Here, let me ask one thing and you can hit upon it a little bit. Is there, before we turn loose, this gentleman, is there any input by this body or who's going to oversee what it is that he paints on our walls?
The mural. Everything that we do, whether it's the stage, the mural, before we put any paint on a wall or dig anything up, we're going to put it by all of you guys. And we've already kind of started conversations, so I always plan to keep you guys part of the conversation because I'd rather not build something and then have to tear it back down. So with the mural specifically, and street art is a very different type of mural than I think what we're used to here. And what I plan to do, and as I work with the artist and with all of you, we'll have him do some conceptual drawings and some ideas about what he's going to approach. I know that he's, he's planning to approach Norfolk history and so it will be based in that. It's not going to be as traditional as we're used to, but I think that makes it an interesting part of it. What the, what the concept will be with the finished project, it may not be exactly, but we want to do everything where you feel comfortable. And that's, that's what our goal is always going to be. We want everybody to be comfortable, but we also want everybody to take a chance too.
You did a great job in the presentation that you did, that your students did as well. And I think Shane would agree with me, what we heard was they're focused and they, they have a vision and, which is great and I too. You know, I think you've done a great job taking them forward, but again, just keep us with you. And I think the council would echo that as well, so.
And even, even recently changes within the park itself with the elimination of the pools, that changes kind of what's going on in the park already and us as a body haven't even addressed that with, with Pat Merceny to see if he has some ideas of where he want, what direction he wants to go.
We have ideas.
Yeah, I know. I understand that.
We're already thinking of.
Well, Pat, you're smiling, so that's the good thing.
For, I guess for the record, you have had those conversations with Pat, with the city?
I haven't been able to talk to Pat yet, but I've talked to Sue, I've talked to Shane, I've talked to other members on the council just to see what people feel, if it's even something to even go into. And what I knew going into today was that I had to have a basic concept so you could at least see what I'm trying to accomplish. And then with the help of all the people who are more experienced in that than I, can shape something that is closer to what the finished project will be. And that I want to work with all of you so that we're making the right decisions, of course.
You know that, that book piece of it, the little library, for lack of a better, it's being done in other areas around here, is it not?
I believe there's one in Hater, I think is the closest one. But they're, I mean, they're all over the world, those little.
Why, I remember hearing that they're springing up in areas around here, some of the small towns, but you actually will take responsibility for keeping that full and maintained, right?
Right. Right. We are working on kind of a schedule, I guess you could say, between the library and their volunteers or, I don't know what you could say, the students that kind of work, come in with you guys. And also with the creative writing class, that teacher approached me specifically. So we're kind of going to be creating a schedule so once a week that is going to be checked to see if it's full, see if it's clean. Yep. We want to make it so that it's taken care of and there's no extra work on the part of the city. So that it's a sustainable project. There's no reason to waste.
Well, you'll have to let us know when you talk to Pat. It might, you might find out he has a little hidden street artist talent in himself.
Really? Well, I know the artist wants to collaborate, so.
That's that local stuff that you were talking about that you're going to pull. Hey, Pat. All right. Any other questions at all? All right. Well, I guess at this point, it's nothing more than a presentation, right? There's nothing that this, this council will actually take action on, but certainly I think you're going to get some, probably some input from outside citizens, so, and as well the council. So let's make sure we stay in touch for a while as you continue to develop.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay? All right. Thank you. All right. Scott, this is going to be a tough act to follow, but you're up next to give us the presentation of the 2011-12 Fire Division Annual Report.
Mayor and Council, I will attempt to be brief. I know you have many things to do and I want to just try to highlight a few things from the past year if I can. Certainly as we go along, if there's questions from that document that was provided, I assume the full, the full report was in your, in your pockets. If you have questions, please interrupt me at any time and I'll certainly try to answer those. But I just wanted to highlight a few things from the past year. It's been 12 years since we renegotiated a contract with the Rural Fire Protection District. For many of you that were on the council at the time, we renewed that contract this past year. That represents a very important relationship with us and about 102 square miles of rural area that surround the city that we're responsible to provide fire protection for. That contract was an excellent example of cooperation between two entities. I'm very proud of the folks on the Rural Board and the efforts that they provide to support our operation. That's about a $3 million relationship with them to support ongoing costs for salaries, equipment maintenance, and future purchases in the form of apparatus and equipment. And we're very pleased with, with what they've done to assist us in carrying out the mission. Additionally, we identified a need with the Rural Fire District to, that our, we had an aged set of extrication tools, often referred to as the jaws of life. Particular brand is a Hearst tool. It's a set of cutters and spreaders and jaws. The Rural Board agreed to buy a set of those for the community and for the rural district and we just took possession of those. It's a $22,000 set of equipment that is going to serve us well for a long, long time. Purchased and held by the Rural Board and made available to us to use in the community as well. So I need to, when I have the opportunity to publicly acknowledge the efforts of the Rural Fire District and what they do to partner with the city to make our operation work well. So I'm pleased with that. That contract moves us forward 12 years, so that will be renegotiated at that time. Over the past year, we received a thorough review from ISO Insurance Service Offices, in-depth evaluation of our water communications and fire department operations from equipment and maintenance, training records, personnel, et cetera. We're pleased that we're able to maintain the Class II rating that had been previously established under Chief Widener. Represents one of three cities in Nebraska that have that rating. There are no Class I's in the city and in the state of Nebraska at this time. And so we're pleased that we were able to do that.
Scott, who are the other two cities?
Carney and what would have been the previous Millard Suburban Fire District. They're now a part of Omaha, so they, Omaha in, by default has achieved that Class I rating or Class II rating. So there are some other rural areas that have a Class II if they're in 1,000 feet of a water supply. But as far as municipalities that are comparable, we have two, do besides us. In April, we had retirement of two senior officers in the fire department. When you lose a shift commander level man, officer position of 30 years plus, it sets forth a series of promotional opportunities. Those two positions, each a captain, lieutenant rank, were replaced. Those new officers have been set in place and are doing an outstanding job for us. So I'm pleased with those promotions and the resulting new hires that came from that. We did ultimately hire two new staff over this past fiscal year to fill those two vacancies and we are currently full with our personnel roster at this time. Norfolk Fire continues to be one of 10 entities statewide that functions as a state-approved Regional Hazardous Material Response Team. Inside our station is a significant array of very expensive, highly technical hazardous materials equipment used to respond and assist with those emergencies. And as such, we're on call to service a very large response area beyond our traditional district to help those in need should that incident occur. It's an significant amount of additional training and maintenance, but with that commitment, we have resources in our community that we would not otherwise have. So we're very pleased to continue that relationship. The planning commission's most aggressive workload over the past year was a whole bunch of code revisions, of which this body approved many of those, probably in reality, all of those. And the most notable action from this past year, you would all recall the activity that occurred with the Alters Expansion. That was probably the most notable and most publicly talked about zoning activity in the past year, just as a highlight. Norfolk remains a part of the Region 11 Emergency Management Relationship. I believe Councilman File's recently been appointed to serve on that board. Represents Antelope Madison and Pierce Counties that represent that, that agency. And Faith Peterson serves as the program manager for that program. It'd be remiss every year if I didn't mention our reserve staff. These men and women represent a wonderful group of people that work in our community, live in our community, that are on call, ready to respond and buttress our career staff and they do an excellent job under the direction of Chief Dooley. These are a wonderful asset to us and we could not function without them and I'm pleased and need to give recognition to those as often as I can. This past year, the Prevention Bureau collected permits and performed inspections on new construction to the tune of about $24 million. If you look at our chart from 2011-12- This past year, the Prevention Bureau collected permits and performed inspections on new construction to the tune of about $24 million. If you look at our chart from 2005, there's been a stagnation and a decline in overall permits issued reflective of the economic challenges nationwide, I think. I hope that those will rebound in the year to come. There are some preliminary indications in our early reports this year that the numbers are up and we hope that they will, they will begin that upward climb again to the glory years, if you will. So we're hopeful for that. We do remain in a cooperative agreement with eight other communities around Norfolk to provide inspection services for them. So we do have our inspectors going out of town at the request of those communities in a contract basis as needed. Overall, our calls for service last year in the Operations Bureau was up just a little over 2%. 2,221 calls for service, that would be a traditional 911 call for a fire or EMS emergency. The Operations Bureau is headed up by Assistant Chief Jim Dooley. I'm pleased to report that over the past year, no serious death or injury came to our, our staff over the past year. That's always a great day in my eyes and for the community when we're able to escape those kind of things. Looking forward to next year, the big things on the horizon for us, as you recall, we will be taking delivery on two new pieces of fire apparatus purchased by the Rural Fire District. Those are under construction as we speak. We toured the facility here this past month and I'm pleased to report that those are on schedule and ready to be delivered this summer as planned. Additionally, in this upcoming year, a city pumper is scheduled for replacement. It'll be about 22 years old at the time that it's due to be replaced. According to our CIP replacement schedule, you'll all be hearing about that, that over the coming months, we've just begun tuning up the specifications for that apparatus. So that's the biggest purchase we have on the horizon in terms of things to prepare for. In summary, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank all of you for the support you provide to Fire Division. I'm very proud and pleased to the staff that serve this community and I'm certainly appreciative of the partnership that we have with all of you. We can't do our job without the support of the council and we consider that a privilege and an honor to serve you. You are the conduit to the community and we hope that we're doing it in a manner that's acceptable to all of you and certainly appreciate your support in making that happen. So with that, I will shut up and answer any questions you might have. I tried to go fast, Dave, I tried.
Well done, well done, Scott. I will certainly tell you that I am very proud too of what it is that we see that this community has in their hands with you at the helm of all of this but as well, a great team behind you. And you know, I appreciate and I would encourage any of the council that might have questions. I know you and I had discussion once about a situation that was brought to my attention and you educated me on things that I never would have thought of as far as responding to sometimes those emergency situations. If, at any time, you know, I think I commented to you myself that I had seen ambulances going without lights and sirens on and you gave me explanation of that. And then, you know, you sit back and you think, obviously, I thought I knew better. Why would you not have them on? But in some situations, it's better to try to keep calm that person that's, the unlucky person that's riding in there. And so, you know, there was a lot of questions that came to me that I learned very quickly that don't try to answer them, just send those folks to the knowledge. So again, if anyone does have questions or concerns that they see within the community, ask because he's a very willing partner to share. So appreciate it all, Scott.
Thank you.
Any questions, anyone?
Scott, I just want to make a comment too, that was a very good report. You guys always have a good report, I think. And the one thing that I was most concerned with was when we brought Shane up for an advancement, moving you up was a good deal but I was more worried about things coming from behind and I think the transition for everybody that we put in place has been working out good because one thing I was scared of, that the permits might have a problem and that's where we all hear from all the contractors and everything. It seemed like it's going pretty smoothly so I want to commend you on all of the work that was done, not just moving everybody up but having them knowledgeable and taking care of all the problems. Like Sue said, we don't hear a lot and it's working really good so I want to commend you guys on that transition too.
Yep. Sometimes change isn't easy and the fear of the unknown certainly can be a concern. Great cooperation from everybody. Shane's been wonderful to be, to support the things that I needed help with and I tried to pass that on and so on and so on. And all the folks that have stepped up in new roles, I'm very pleased with their willingness to try.
It did show by the amount of phone calls I got, so it went very smoothly.
Thank you, sir.
As always, Dave kind of beat me to the punch but I wanted to echo that same thing. Since I got on the council six years ago, Scott, your door's always been open for any questions that I have and I appreciate that resource that I've always had. And when you made that step as a fire chief, I was afraid I'd lose that resource and also with Shane's transition to the administrator but you've done a great job filling his shoes and it's just been a great process, very smooth and I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to echo that as well. You go about your business in a very professional manner as does your whole staff and we really appreciate the fact that we have them here in the city.
Thank you, Councilman.
Ben.
I guess as well, there's two contractors but I better say something as a contractor. We've, you know, we've had direct conversation over the years with, with different issues that have raised in our industry and again, I can echo what they're saying. It's always been an open door and very quick to address any issues that have been there and I think that says a lot, especially in our industry with the regulations we have to abide by and the codes we have to abide by. There's a lot of different things that go a different way and I think that you guys have done a great job of working with us, so, thanks.
Appreciate it, Councilman.
I think you're free to go. Maybe we should do this every six months for you, Scott. That was pretty, some great kudos for you, so.
Great evening.
All right, you as well. Before we adjourn, can I look at you, Rob? You want to share a little bit about?
You bet, Mayor, thank you. Just talk about building permits, so this is, this kind of speaks to, we've had a recent decline in building permits and everybody is hopeful that we're going to see a spike in economic development, not only in this city but in the area. Here last week, along with the mayor and city administrator and the economic development coordinator, several county officials and what have you.
Randy Gates.
Randy Gates, yes, thank you very much. Attended a meeting down in Madison that had to do with TIF financing, tax increment financing for residential development. And I learned a lot that I didn't know about it. The information that was, that was put forth at that meeting is going to be available for everybody on council. We'll be able to kind of study up on it and I'm certainly, I'm sure there'll be a lot of questions about whether we'll be able to look at that as something to, to kind of attack the, the housing issues that we're going to have in the city looking, looking down the road at economic development. It's no, it's no, it's not going to be a surprise to anybody that in this three or four-legged stool of economic development, housing is one thing, certainly education is another, available land and all these kinds of things. So hopefully we'll be able to find out a little bit about how this tool might be used to further our efforts to, to get this economic development thing kicked into gear a little bit, so just wanted to mention that.
Thanks, I appreciate that. If nothing further, Council, we are adjourned.